Good evening and welcome to the 605th meeting of the City of Laurel Planning Commission. This meeting is being held virtually via Zoom. All information and materials have been available on the website at the City of Laurel website. And I do have a speaker list and during the meeting, I will pause at particular times to see if there are any additional speakers. With that, Ms. Quillen, if you would please call the roll.
Council President Cole.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Kish.
Here.
Mr. Wellford.
Yeah.
Mr. Grant.
There.
Mr. Spalding.
Yeah.
Chairwoman Bateman.
Here.
You have a quorum, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. Before I move on to Agenda Item Two, I would like to welcome and acknowledge that Mayor Sidnor has appointed an alternate to the City of Laurel Planning Commission, and that is Stanley Spalding. I believe Stanley's new to Laurel and one of his first things that he did was to attend a City of Laurel Planning Commission meeting. And now we welcome you, Stanley, to the Planning Commission as an alternate and as a participant. Would you like to say anything?
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve the community.
Well, thank you, and we look forward to your participation. Moving on to Agenda Item Two, approval of the minutes from the December 12, 2023 meeting. The minutes were distributed via email to all members. Are there any questions for staff? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the December 12, 2023 meeting as received from staff.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wellford and Mr. Wilson. Ms. Quillen, if you would please call the roll.
Mr. Wellford.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
I'll vote yes, and I want to thank staff and Brooke for all the hard work on these minutes every, every month. You guys do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kish.
Yes.
Mr. Grant.
Yes.
Chairwoman Bateman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Three and Four, I would like to read into the record. We will have a singular report from staff and questions. However, we will have separate voting on this. So Agenda Item Three is the amended MXT final site plan application nine five four and resolution number two four dash zero one dash V C one four nine three zero Silver Trail Lane filed by Westside Land Holdings LLC. A public hearing on the application and final action by the Planning Commission. Agenda Item Four.
Recording in progress.
Special exception application number nine five five one four nine three zero Silver Trail Lane filed by Westside Land Holdings LLC for recommendation to the Board of Appeals. I believe Mr. Love, you're doing the staff report?
I am. Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes, we can. I can.
My power went out exactly as it turned six o'clock. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commission members. Tonight, I stated I will be presenting both applications at once as they are closely aligned with one another. For the first application, the applicant is seeking an amended final MXT site plan approval to alter the previously approved commercial building on Lot Three. It's shot a drive-through. The original building was approved on May 12, 2020 with detailed MXT site plan application number nine oh three, which include a 10,000 square foot retail building. The original building will increase to a total of 10,231 square feet with the addition of the drive-through. The drive-through lane will be 12 feet wide and will start at the right side of the building with a drive-through window being located on the left side of the building. There will be 56 onsite parking spaces, which includes 52 standard spaces, two ADA spaces, and two van-accessible spaces, which meets the ULDC code as does the proposed green area. Staff recommends that the City of Laurel Planning Commission approve amended final MXT site plan number nine fifty-four with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall obtain all required City of Laurel permits from the Department of Fire, Marshal, and Permit Services. Two, the applicant shall obtain approval for special exception number nine fifty-five prior to the issuance of the first building permit. Three, the applicant shall comply with all applicable local, state, and federal laws and regulations in the development of the property. Now, for the second application, the applicant is seeking a special exception approval to construct and operate a drive-through for a Chipotle restaurant. As stated before, the drive-through lane will be 12 feet wide and will start on the right side of the building with the drive-through window being located on the left side of the building. The applicant meets the criteria set forth in Section twenty dash twenty-one dot one of the ULDC for special exceptions to be accepted. The applicant addresses this criteria in the statement justification and staff report presented to the Planning Commission. Staff recommends that the City of Laurel Planning Commission recommend approval to the City of Laurel Board of Appeals for special exception nine fifty-five with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall obtain all required City of Laurel permits from the Department of Fire, Marshal, and Permit Services. Two, the applicant shall obtain approval for amended final MXT site plan number nine fifty-four prior to the issuance of the first building permit. Three, the applicant shall comply with all applicable local, state, and federal laws and regulations in the development of the property. Thank you, and the applicant, Mr. Gibbs, and his team is on the call and would like to make a small presentation, if that's okay, Madam Chair.
Yes, first let me check to see if there are any questions of staff before we go to Mr. Gibbs. Mr. Wilson, any questions?
Uh, no, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Kish.
I have none. Thank you.
Mr. Wellford.
No, thank you.
Mr. Spalding.
No, thank you.
And Council President slip, slip of the time, Council President Cole.
No, Madam Chairwoman, no questions.
Thank you. Mr. Gibbs, if you would please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening, Chair Bateman, members of the Planning Commission, Council Chair Cole. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. My name is Edward Gibbs, and I am an attorney with offices located in Largo, Maryland. I'm here this evening representing the property owner and the applicant, Westside Land Holdings Limited Liability Company. And that LLC owns the commercial component of the project. But I would say that that LLC is also controlled by its member Strip Matter Land LLC, and of course, Strip Matter has been the owner and master developer of Westside from its inception. And, you know, I have been before you on so many occasions with regard to this project. Running back as far as probably around 2010, 2011, when we first came in and ultimately we annexed the entire property into the city in 2012. And just as a bit of history, because I do think it's important to kind of set, set the table here, so to speak. After we annexed the property in, we were assigned the MXT zone in the city because that is the same zone that we had when the property was governed by the Prince George's County zoning ordinance. And in the MXT zone, we have to file a conceptual site plan, a preliminary subdivision plan, and a site plan before you can go ahead and, and develop the property and, of course, do a final record plat of subdivision. So we, we did our conceptual site plan, and it was approved in 2013. And it authorized 500 multifamily residential units, up to 80 townhouses, a hotel consisting of up to 150 rooms, and 200,000 square feet of commercial retail space. And all of that commercial retail space was to go out in the front of the project, out off with frontage on Van Duzen Road. And so we went forward and we did preliminary subdivision plans for all the uses. The multifamily was the first to be built, and it has been constructed for a number of years now. After we did the multifamily, we did the, the initial residential townhome portion that was approved for up to 80 lots. And that ended up being 56 lots. And as you're coming in off of Westside Boulevard, you're coming, coming into the project, and the commercial component was on the left-hand side. And as the road sort of turned to the left on a curve, on the right-hand side is where the 56 townhouses were built and developed. And and so at a, at a certain point in time, after countless efforts to entice a grocery store as the retail commercial anchor for this project, my client came to the conclusion that there simply was no market for that anchor tenant. And 200,000 square feet of small retail uses really weren't going to be feasible. So what we did is we came in and we filed a revision to the original conceptual site plan. That was approved in 2019. And and if, let me just also say, and I apologize for not introducing my team members at the outset, but Mr. Blake Escherick, a principal of Strip Matter, and Mr. Escherick has really guided this entire project through all of its entitlements and the construction phases. He's with us. Mr. Kevin Caluette from Atwell, our engineering firm, he is with us. Mr. Michael Lenhart, our traffic consultant, our traffic engineer, he is here. And our land planner, Mark Ferguson, is also here. And, and if either, if either Rob or Mr. Caluette could bring up the overall plan that shows the 81 townhouses and the and the retail lots, I would greatly appreciate it. Okay, well, that shows the lots. Do we have the, the plan view that also shows the lot? There we go. That's, that's it. So as you're coming in off of Van Duzen in the lower, lower left corner of the drawing that's up in front of you, that's Westside Boulevard, of course. And as you come in, everything that you see inside of that road network was supposed to be the 200,000 square feet of commercial retail for this project. And the 56 townhomes were sort of on the right-hand side, the northeast side of where the, where Westside Boulevard curves. And as you come down to the circle, you would turn off of the circle and go over to the community building for the multifamily, and then beyond that, all of the multifamily units. So we were we were trying, my client was trying his utmost to make the 200,000 square feet of retail a reality. And again, it just, it just wasn't there from a marketing standpoint after several years of efforts with brokers. And and so in 2019, we came in and we did a revision to the conceptual site plan. And that revision to the conceptual site plan was approved by the Planning Commission and signed off on by the mayor and council. They supported it as well. And so what ended up happening is that the commercial component was reduced to 40,000 square feet. And the balance of that property out there, there had been such an overwhelming demand for the residential townhomes where we only had 56. We sought permission to add more residential townhomes. And what you see sort of in the lighter color there, so we're almost sort of ghosted out, as they say, we got approval for 81 additional residential townhomes. So when that, when that conceptual site plan was approved, and I, and I might add, one of the things you have to do when you approve a conceptual site plan is you have to show your points of access and circulation. And, and so the four, there are four commercial lots for the commercial component. Lots one, two, three, and four. They have two access points off of Westside Boulevard. And you can see them there. The first one comes in with a full turning movement and a median break. It comes in sort of at an angle, 45 degrees, and then turns to go up through the center of the commercial component. And then there is another private road with an access point off of Westside Boulevard and another median break right behind the commercial component. It's called Private Road F. And one half of that private road is on the commercial component. And the other half, it's about 22 to 24 feet in width. The other half of that private road is on the residential component. And then, of course, you see two entry access points as you come up on Westside Boulevard, two other access points into the residential component. There is also a connection from the residential component into the commercial component via Private Road F. If you look at the layout of the 81 units, you will see that the internal roadways come up and, and connect at three different points to that internal access road, actually possibly four, to provide for ready access into the commercial area by, by the residents. And that was the intent. And, and of course, you know, in the MXT zone, the entire purpose is to have a mix of uses which are integrated in terms of being able to obtain access and use, in particular, for the residents to gain access to the commercial. So we then went and filed a preliminary subdivision plan for the 81 lots and a preliminary subdivision plan for the four commercial lots. And those were both approved in 2019. Then we next went and got a detailed site plan approved for the 81 lots. That occurred in November of 2019. And a overall site plan for the four commercial lots, and that was approved in February of 2020. The 81 lots are, many of them are occupied now. Everything is under construction. All the paving for both the commercial component and the 81 townhouse lots has been laid. You know, parking lot areas are there, as are the internal, internal driveways and private roads. What happened was that the very first site plan filed, and this is, this is sort of really important for what we're doing tonight. The very first site plan that was filed for the commercial component was for Lot Three. And Lot Three is the subject of the hearing tonight. So we had four, we had four commercial lots. And if you're looking at this drawing, Lot One is in the upper left-hand corner, you know, which would, which would really be the southwest corner of the site. Then beneath that is, I guess that's Lot Three, and that's the Wawa. The Wawa is now open within the last month.
It's Lot Two, Ed.
Is that Lot Two? Okay, Lot Two, excuse me. Then Lot Four is on the other side of the private driveway from the Wawa, and that is an inline retail building. And the primary user that we have signed for that building is Starbucks. That building is basically completed. It's up. There's interior finish work ongoing at the moment. And then right above the Starbucks building is Lot Three. And, you know, coincidentally, Lot Three was the very first detailed site plan that was approved. And, and you reviewed it, Planning Commission, and you approved it for a 10,000 square foot inline retail building. When we filed that detailed site plan, it was the first detailed site plan for the commercial component that we filed. And while it was for a 10,000 square foot inline building, we included the entire commercial component. And that was, that was crucial because we had to show the points of access, and we had to show the internal circulation that, that would make that entire commercial component work. So all of that was approved with that first detailed site plan in February of 2020. We didn't have any users at that time for this 10,000 square foot building. But the building was approved. And you get in by coming in off of Westside Boulevard using the primary access, access road between the four lots as you move up. And then you're able to turn right into the parking lot for that 10,000 square foot building. After that, in 2022, the Starbucks detailed site plan was approved. And Starbucks needed a special exception as well because Starbucks had a drive-through component. So the drive-through lane is behind the building, so to the north of the building on this plan. So you enter the drive-through for Starbucks at the extreme eastern or, you know, bottom of edge of the building. Turn left and proceed west along the north end of the building, and then turn left again along the west end of the building where the drive-through lane, where the drive-through window will be located. That was all approved by the Planning Commission from a detailed site plan standpoint and recommended for approval by the Board of Appeals for the, for the special exception. Of course, the drive-through component is what requires that special exception. And and then similarly, the Wawa was approved as well. It got completed first, and of course, is now open. So the, what we now have, and the only thing that brings us here this evening, is that Chipotle is the first user who has committed to the building on Lot Three. And Chipotle, if it were just the Chipotle going in, we'd be in just getting permits. But what happened is Chipotle now has a pickup window concept. It's not a drive, it's not a traditional drive-through lane. You cannot go into a drive-through lane at Chipotle and make an order at a drive-through window or from speakers or anything like that. You have to place your order, whether it be online, which is most likely, or via telephone. And once the order is placed, you know, you're given an approximate time to come in, and you go through the pickup window and, and pick your order up, but you don't order it in that lane. And, and the orientation of the drive-through lane that, that will be used is exactly the same as you approved for Starbucks. So do we have a blow-up of just the commercial that, that we could bring up on the screen at this point, whether it's Rob or Kevin? There we go. Go back to one more. There we go. So I don't, I don't know. I guess we can't get to the bottom here, but, but so what you're seeing here.
That's okay. And we had it, we had the ability to see it in our packets.
Yeah, we've got it. Okay, great. So, so anyhow, what we have here, you, you see the details of just Lot Three and the Chipotle. And so the, the orientation for the drive-through is identical to the orientation for the Starbucks. So you will come in, you will take a right-hand turn at the eastern edge of the 10,000 square foot building. You will come into the drive-through lane. The drive-through lane runs immediately behind the building, and so you proceed in a westerly direction along the north edge of the building. Then you come up to the end of the building, take another left-hand turn, and the drive-through window itself is located on the western edge of the building. Now, adding this drive-through or pickup component had, had two effects. Number one, the addition of the window itself ended up adding some square footage to the building. So the building will now be 10,231 square feet as opposed to just 10,000 square feet. The second thing that happened is that because we had to create room for the pickup lane, we had to shift the building to the south on Lot Three. And what, and what happened then was that the parking spaces that we had in front, directly in front of the building were lost because of moving the building. We had, you know, a lot more spaces than were needed. But, but, but those two changes required us to revise our final site plan. And then adding the pickup window necessitates a special exception. And so that's why, that's why we're here. You know, we, we have the required parking. We added parking up on the west end. And I apologize for being so verbose, but I did think that some orientation and history was, was important. And so, you know, the, the revision to the site plan is certainly minimal in nature. We do have screening in, in the way of fencing on the outside of the drive-through lane to protect the visuals from the residential component back there. But again, this has all been approved a long time ago when we went through the original preliminary plan process. when we went through the original preliminary plan process and the detailed site, site plan process the first time around. So, you know, we have analyzed in excruciating detail the criteria for a special exception. There is a legislative presumption of compatibility. This is, this building remains at the same layout that it essentially had when it was approved the first time around. We have four different witnesses here to testify if you need them, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. So thank you for indulging me.
Thank you. Before I open the public hearing, let me do another roll call to see if there are any questions of Mr. Gibbs or any of the experts that he has with him. Mr. Kish, any questions for the applicant? Mr. Welford?
No, thank you, Madam Chair. I have no-
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
I believe some folks may have dropped off, Madam Chair. We'll try to get them back on.
I think so. Mr. Spalding?
No, no questions.
Thank you. Counsel President Cole? I think power's blinking off. I'm sorry, Mr. Grant, I skipped you. Mr. Grant?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Let's see, with Mr. Spalding, Mr. Welford and myself, I believe we still have a quorum if we need to get to vote before the others come back on.
I believe Mr. Wilson just got back on, Madam Chair.
Great. Mr. Wilson, do you have any questions of the applicant before I go to the public hearing?
Yeah, if I could, thank you. I just got, we had a power bump here, so I just got back in. First of all, I want to thank Strip Matter and Mr. Gibbs for, I guess this has been about a fifteen-year process. And I think it's, it explains a lot about how this process is supposed to work for MXTs that we were able, as a community, along with the investors, be able to work through changes in the marketplace, frankly. So I, I think it's a real testament to what Laurel City's zoning and planning folks were able to do along with Mr. Gibbs and his colleagues and, and the entire team. So I applaud that. I just wanted to ask one question. Just, I, I couldn't find it in there. What, when was this property annexed?
Two thousand twelve.
Well, okay. Thank you. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. I I would like to open the public hearing on both the amended MXT final site plan and the special exception application number nine five five. I do have multiple people signed up. I will call on you and if you would state your name and address. Derek Grady?
Good afternoon, Madam.
Good afternoon.
Can anyone hear me okay?
Yes.
My address is fourteen eight one nine Willow Run in the West Side Community. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, my family, and some of the other community members. I'm not for sure who else is online in any other case. We've come to our attention about this project in lieu of us moving into the community and finding out some of the different things that were going on. Our primary concern was the safety of the community because we don't have a lot of space for ourselves and our children to move about throughout the community based on the site plan and how it is. Neither here or there, that aspect of it, but also not knowing about some of the commercial properties that were being in place. So like I said, that wasn't disposed to us as we were moving into the community. We found out after the fact. What came about it for us was Ed had reached out to us about the parking space based on his last statement when the building had to be shifted and they were needing parking spaces. And our concern more so was the safety. I think a lot of us are welcoming the commercial side of the aspect of it. It's just we're concerned about the traffic that will be flowing in and through the community around our homes and the safety aspect of that. So we had asked for some changes in exception for the parking spaces, but the return response was they no longer needed our parking spaces, so it was null and void at that point. And our discussion still came about of what could be some resolutions to where we could meet in the middle of our safety and still enjoying the commercial side of our community. And some options have been presented as far as speed bumps. I'll be honest, I asked for probably what had been probably the most extreme action, which was to block off those access points and not allow the traffic to flow through our community but around it, and we were okay with that. But again, that was a hard ask, but it was there. Ed did offer up some suggestions as far as speed bumps or act, put in the, a no-turning sign at one of the corners to prevent potential traffic flowing through that aspect. So we wanted to bring it attention to the council in the city of Laurel as far as our concerns. I'm pretty sure that some others would speak on it as well, too, if they're here. But that's pretty much in the short synopsis of it. We would like to see some give and take on this process and consideration of the community that's adjacent to the commercial side. Like I said, we appreciate and we value the aspect of the the commercial side of it, but at the same time, some of us spoke and said, we value our safety as well. Because an aspect right now, what we're seeing, I've seen a lot of flow-through traffic. I've seen trash being thrown from one side versus the other, and we're policing behind ourselves as a community, but we wanted to see what could be done on our behalf or what can be negotiated in a sense for, you know, the way these, the site is set up and what we're dealing with at this point and one of our voices to be heard. That's pretty much all I have in that aspect of it. I can go into detail if you like, but that's just it and the sake of time and giving others an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. I've written some notes that I'll ask some follow-up questions. Thank you very much. Mo, Mo, Mo Filayo, I apologize for the mispronunciation. Arowolo? Are you on the call? M O F I L A Y O. Last name A R O W O L O. About Anna Tyson?
Yes, hello, I'm on the call.
Welcome. If you would please state your name and address for the record.
I am Anna Tyson. I live at one four eight four six Willow Run Lane. I am here to kind of support what Derek had said. There is, we're, as a community, we're just kind of concerned about the traffic, the incoming traffic and the uptick that we will see once the retail opens. I think one of our other concerns is the parking and how our parking is connected to the retail parking. So I know we had spoken with Mr. Gibbs on a few calls, just seeing if we could separate the retail parking and our parking in the far lot towards the top, towards the end of Silver Run Lane. It's part, connected by that shared road between the West Side Homes and the retail. That was my big concern is just in a townhome community, the parking is very tight. And you can see that in the West Side Development, one of the townhomes, I think it was the fifty-six homes that Ed was talking about. So that was just going to just bring that up to see if we could protect some of that parking, just maybe close off that little access point. So we have some bit of separation between what is the residential parking versus the retail parking.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak for the public hearing? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing at six thirty-five P M. I have a couple of follow-up questions for either Robert or Mr. Gibbs in reference to what the residents have raised. I guess as I drove through there, I missed the shared aspect. I was thinking that the retail was self-contained and that there would be potentially signs that said there's, there's no exit if you enter into the retail space, basically, because your only in-out point is, is out through West Side Boulevard, correct? You can't exit onto any of the other roads if you go into that neighborhood. So, Mr. Gibbs, can you speak to their concerns? And I, I heard two basically. One is the safety aspect, so I don't know if there are, how the crosswalks might be between the retail and the residential there. And the second concern that they raised was the, the, the flow-through, I'm sorry, flow-through traffic was one. And the other is the parking that is for townhomes and for retail. And I know that, that this commission has talked about parking before in terms of townhouse communities. Mr. Gibbs?
I believe you're muted, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, so we, we did, first of all, let me just say that we had our initial meeting. We reached out through the management company and requested meetings with both the eighty-one townhouse lot community and the fifty-six lot townhouse community. And then we also arranged a meeting ourselves with the multifamily residents. And all those meetings, first of all, our very first meeting occurred with the residents of the eighty-one lots, and I've heard the concerns previously. That meeting occurred on November thirtieth. Then we agreed that we would meet again on December fourteenth, and we did have a follow-up meeting. After that December fourteenth meeting, we had a meeting with the fifty-six townhouse lot community and the multifamily. No concerns were raised at either of those two later meetings. The, the eighty-one lot owners did raise concerns relative to the fact that there are vehicular connections between the commercial component and the residential component. And that's really the nature of the MXT zone. You, you want that connectivity. We, we would not want the people in the eighty-one lot section of the community to have to go out on West Side Boulevard, come down West Side Boulevard and turn into the same entrance that people are coming in off of Van Duzen Road. It, it, it's, it's really a benefit for those residents. And what we said that we could do, first of all, when we met with these folks on November thirtieth, at that point in time, we, we said, listen, the, under code, under code, the townhomes, the eighty-one townhomes have a hundred and eighty-five extra parking spaces above what code requires. Okay? Now, code provides that the space or spaces in the garage are counted and the space or spaces in the driveway are counted for townhomes, just as they are for single-family homes. And of course, there's the inevitable pushback of residents who say, well, you know, I use my garage for, not for parking, but-
No, I, Mr. Gibbs, I understand that. Let's address, let's just talk through what is the, is part of the, is there part of the parking that should be for retail being taken? Or, I'm sorry, for the townhomes being taken by retail? Is there any way to separate or is there not?
Now, the, the design that has been approved on the conceptual site plan, on the preliminary subdivision plan, on the detailed site plans for the eighty-one townhouse lots and for the commercial, as well as the record, the recorded record plat of subdivision shows all these connections. They've all been studied. You know, they're there for a reason, for, for, for the, for the purposes of the MXT zone to have a mixed-use project that interfaces between the various component types. And, and also quite frankly, if there's ever a situation where you can't, where through an emergency, you can't get in on West Side Boulevard, they're, they're for emergency vehicles, life safety issues, to have another way to get in. But we, we are, we are proposing where you exit the drive-through lane from Chipotle to put a sign that says no right turn, which will mean that cars have to turn left and leave the site the way they came in, which is what they're going to want to do anyhow. They don't want to go through a residential community to get out. They want to get back out the Van Duzen Road as quickly as they can. We also proposed and continue to propose that on Private Road F, which runs between the commercial and the residential, to request that the city authorize us to put some speed bumps in there to control speed, even though we're planning to post it for fifteen miles an hour.
Okay, Robert, Mr. Grady, I see your hand up. Hold on for, for me for a second. Mr. Love, the speed bump issue or the speed humps that the city has done several in the last couple of months, is that a condition that commission could put in the technical staff report, or is that something that would, because that wouldn't be, I don't know if we can do that to the city.
I mean, you, you could acquire, that's, you know, that's private road back there, but I mean, they can put it in without any sort of approvals, I guess, as far as like through the commission. But if you wish to put that in as a condition, yeah, I mean, you, you could, you could request that as a condition as part of, part of the site plan if you're looking to do so. I think, and then going back, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Chair, the question you're, you're looking for, all of the parking required for the commercial aspect is on commercial, on the commercial land. It is completely contained within those lots. Okay?
Thank you. And then, secondly, the no-right turn sign kind of reminds me of our no-left turn sign that we required McDonald's to put up on Route One. And because there's no curb or barrier, every person, ninety percent of the people coming out of the McDonald's drive-through still turn left onto Route One, which causes a disaster. Mr. Gibbs, is there a potential, instead of just a sign no-right turn, that you can extend that curb so that nobody can turn there? I'm not talking about closing off the road. I'm talking about extending that drive-through so that they're forced to go to the left.
Um, I, you know, I think that might be very difficult, but I would defer to Mr. Lenhart, our traffic consultant and possibly our civil engineer, Mr. Caluette. I mean, look, if we could do that in such a manner as to prevent a right turn from being made from that drive-through lane, that we're, we're certainly willing to do it. The only thing I would remind you of is that Lot One is directly across that driveway from Lot Three. And we don't have a user for Lot One yet, but the one thing you wouldn't want to do is prevent someone from exiting the drive-through lane and going into the parking lot at Lot One. So we'd have to take that into account when, when designing the site for Lot One in terms of an access driveway off of the private driveway internally. So that if someone comes out of that drive-through lane and are forced to take a left by some type of concrete curbing, that there's enough room for them to get out and then take a right and get into the Lot One. But yes, we-
Yeah, no, my, my thing was more to prevent the right turn, not, not forcing that, you know, because it, so if they could go straight or left or whatever, and I understand you still have Lot One to go. I apologize, I'm talking a, a long time. Mr. Grady, can I go back to you if you still wanted to make a comment?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
I guess just to rebuttal on some of that aspect to go back, what Ed had said, the, the community did state that we were willing to block off the entire access point and we were comfortable because of safety in that aspect. Now, as far as the parking goes, that was spoken up to the top corner, we had asked that that be blocked off because we are dealing with the parking situation from the community to the adjacent of us. When they have events and parties, they park in front of our homes and then we have a minimum amount of parking spaces. Now, in the aspect of two with the turn signal, I agree with what you said. I'm glad- I'm glad you brought that point up. As far as, yeah, a sign can be put up, but no one's going to pay attention to that sign. They're going to make that turn and they're going to go through that aspect. I stay on the first main street, once you first turn in on a private road and there's an access point that comes just adjacent to the Starbucks. And what I've noticed already in some cases, people leaving the Wawa, they will come flying down that street and where my son plays, where other communities' kids play as well, too. Again, stating that we do not have a lot of points of play outside of being in front of our driveway or in the streets. So the speed bumps will potentially slow people down. But the fact that they still have access to come in and out of the community, you know, is going to be an issue. So I, just to put that into perspective of everybody's thinking, and if you put yourself in our shoes, put yourself in our community and be about, you know, your business on the daily day actions of living there, you would be concerned about the traffic flowing through and the preserving of your community and the amount of trash that we've already been picking up. In any other case, I complain continuously, but I'm in the process of starting to go in and pick up the trash myself because people eat the food from the places, then they dump it on the curb of the street. So all of those are factors. And like I said, what Anna said earlier, too, as far as parking, that parking space that's just to the north of us is far away from some of the other homes. And they don't have the right of way as far as what we have in front of our homes, where we have a space where we can park. So we're limited to the amount of parking, and she was asking about that being closed off. So if anyone do, like I said, we, we have no idea what the other lot's going to fulfill. And if it's a commercial spot that's going to require a lot of people coming in and out, they could potentially take up those parking spaces from our residents and from our visitors. So you have to think they have to travel anywhere from, that's almost a hundred to a hundred and fifty yards from some of the locations for parking where some don't have that. But these are a lot of considerations to put into place.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Grady, I thought you were done, I apologize.
No worries, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I could, if I could, Chair, I, I apologize, if I could just respond to that. Again, the, the townhouses have, I've never seen a project where the townhouses have a hundred and eighty-five surplus parking spaces. I mean, it's normally like thirteen, twenty, twenty-five, whatever, a hundred and eighty-five. That's a massive overpark. And
Right, but, but, but the reality is they're living it. And, and the commission knows that we have always had issues with townhouse parking lots. Ed, I understand exactly what you're saying, and on the, on the books, you are correct. The numbers are there.
They're, they're massive. But the other, the other point, too, is that, you know, actual studies before and after have shown that when you have any type of drive-through window associated with a retail use, it reduces the need for parking by, by a factor between forty and sixty percent over what the required parking requirement is. That's why parking waivers are, are granted all the time for these types of uses. So we're not asking for a waiver, we're providing all fifty-two spaces. And I'm just noting that the drive-through component is going to further reduce the need for parking in this building. And that's just another consideration. I, I, you know, I'll be guided by what the commission says, and I'd like to hear my client's comments if, if, if it comes to that. But, but, but I mean, internal circulation throughout the community, I mean, that's, that's, that's the nature of the M X T zone, a mix of use. That's why people come and live in a mixed-use community to have the benefits of this. So, but anyhow, I, I respect Mr. Grady and Ms. Tyson, and I, you know, we're trying to address concerns by what we've offered. And I, 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 if, if engineeringally that curb can be, can be constructed in such a way that you can't turn right, then we're happy to, we're happy to do that.
Thank you. I've done an awful lot of talking. Let me check with commissioners. Mr. Wellford, any comments?
I, I would just like to clarify for myself, I guess, that it, as this comes to more of a completion with the whole building and everything, and, and, and it starts to be used by the public more. And if it's found to be that there are things that need to be addressed to correct any safety issues or anything like that, 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 that come about as, you know, as it happens, instead of just looking forward and, and trying to think what, what it might be. If it, if it does come, we can revisit this, am I correct? And, and thinking that we can revisit this if there's other ideas that come up that would solve any problems?
Robert, can you comment on that, please?
Yeah, we can always come back and look at things. If there, there are minor adjustments that the property can make, they won't even have to actually come before planning commission, such as some of the speed bump signage, various things like that. Anything major, if it was some sort of, like you said, like chailing off of different parking areas, that would have to come before the, that could come before the commission. But yes, there's, there's various things that could, that could be looked at in time, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Kish? He may still be offline. Oh, hi, John, sorry, go ahead.
I have none, thank you. Billy sort of answered my question.
Thank you. Mr. Grant?
Yes, I'd just like to commend Mr. Gibbs and Mr. Grady for, you know, taking an honest, open look at the situation and Mr., Mr. Gibbs willingness to meet some of the accommodations and requests from Mr. Grady. And, and as Mr. Gibbs says, these are the type of communities that Laurel would like to attract because at the end of the day, it's all about bringing value to the city. And this is what's gonna, at the end of the day, increase real estate value here and put everybody in a better situation. So I'm, I'm just overwhelmed, I'm very pleased with the approach that is being taken. And I, I commend Mr. Gibbs for, for his, you know, historic, putting everything into a historical context. And also thanks, Mr. Grady, for bringing some of his issues out so that we can come to a, to an amicable agreement and create a wonderful city. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. I think Mr. Grady has brought up that he's, he has issues today. This isn't some future-looking issue. It appears that he's got some issues today relative to safety and people speeding through the thing, through the community. So I, I think we need to put something in any approval that would let us have the ability then to, I don't know if it needs to be as drastic as blocking it off. The fact that it's an M X T is, you know, to people that live inside the development and planning world, that, that has meaning. But to somebody that's just buying a house in the community, I don't think they realize they're in an M X T zone and really what all the ramifications of that are. So I think we need something in there that would give the community some relief relative to any future problems. I, I can appreciate that you don't want somebody pulling out of the Chipotle and speeding down through the neighborhood. So we, we need something in there that would, would give us the ability to fix this problem in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, and maybe you can think of your motion. Mr. Spalding?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you. Council President Cole?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I've enjoyed listening to the public hearing on this. I appreciate Mr. Gibbs's very lengthy history on this. I was unaware of, of some of the projects as it has gone past, as I'm new to the commission. Had some questions for Director Love, I think I heard it in one of your comments. But I just wanted to make sure, so the roads inside the residential community, those are private roads, those are not city streets?
Up through, when you come up West Side Boulevard and kind of when the roundabout goes, that's maintained by the city? Then everything internal to that is, are considered private roads, yes?
So if the community wanted to have speed bumps, they would not have to go through the city's speed bump policy?
Correct.
All right, but I think I like that. Speed bumps, I think, have their place, especially if people are cutting through the community. And then as far as access points, I, I don't know if they could, could block them off with some of the flexible delineators that would still allow the emergency vehicles to go through. That was just one thing that I was thinking, just if there was something directly adjacent to the Chipotle, just block off that one, but still make it so that emergency vehicles could get through because we don't want to block those. That would be my only points on this.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Mr. Gibbs, any brief final comments before we take a motion? Oops, you're muted.
Yes, I, I mean, I, I have said a lot and I don't want to unduly lengthen this, this process. But I, I just reiterate again, I, I, I think we should let the speed bumps and the curbing, see how that works. I, I really, on behalf of my client, have to express objections to closing off access. It was designed this way, it was reviewed numerous times this way, it's on the record plat this way. And, and it's for a reason. And, and so I, I think we need to look and see how it works. We have to come back in with the site plan for Lot One. And, and certainly, listen, you know, if there are problems with enforcement of speed, then, you know, that, that needs to be handled. And, and, you know, perhaps we should come back to the table and talk to the planning commission if, you know, if that does in fact occur. But, but I, I just, I cannot willingly agree to close those access points on behalf of my client at this point, particularly since the site has been designed that way, reviewed numerous times that way. But thank you very much.
Understood, and thank you. Mr., well, I will, if there are no further questions, I will open this. Actually, let me state clearly for the record, at this point, I will entertain a motion for Agenda Item Three, amended M X T final site plan application nine five four and resolution number two four dash zero one, fourteen nine thirty, Silver Trail filed by West Side Land Holdings LLC. The special exception motion will follow this one. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I will make a motion, as you read into the record for the application nine five four and resolution twenty-four dash oh one dash P C, including the staff report and with an addition that we would revisit this with the community after, at, at some point in time, to look for any ability to be able to make changes to safety.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Mr. Grant, was that a second?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to second the motion.
Thank you very much. Ms. Quillan, if you would please call the roll.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Wellford?
Yes.
Mr. Kish? Mr. Kish?
Yes, I was muted, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to, I will, if there are no further questions, I will accept a motion on special exception application number nine five five, fourteen nine thirty Silver Trail Lane filed by West Side Land Holding LLC for recommendation to the Board of Appeals.
Madam Chair, I will so move to make that recommendation to approve this to the Board of Appeals.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, I will second that.
Thank you, Mr. Kish. Ms. Quillan, if you will please call the roll.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Wellford?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gibbs and your team, Mr. Grady and Ms. Tyson. Thank you for your involvement. And Mr. Gibbs and Mr. Grady, I look forward to you continuing to talk and move to resolution. It's a nice, nice part of, of the city that's coming together there and look forward to, to things working out. Thank you all.
Yes, thank you very much. We appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Moving on to Agenda Item Five, nominations for Chair. I will entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that our current chair is returned to the chair. She's doing a great job, as tonight demonstrated. And if she's willing, I would wholeheartedly move to approve Mitzi Bettman as our chair.
And I'd second that.
Thank you, I accept. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, Ms. Quillan, if you will please call the roll.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Most definitely.
Mr. Wellford?
Yes, indeed.
Mr. Grant?
Absolutely, yes.
Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes, and thank you very, very much. I appreciate it. You all make it easy for me. Moving on to Agenda Item Six, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Quillan, did you say motion carry?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Oh, no, she screwed up, we're going to pull that nomination.
Uh-oh, uh-oh, uh-oh. Moving on to Agenda Item Six, nominations for Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, I would move that we renominate Mr. Kish as our Vice Chair.
I would second.
Mr. Kish, would you accept that nomination?
Yes, I would.
Are there any other nominations for our Vice Chair? Hearing none, Ms. Quillan, if you will please call the roll.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, and I want to thank Mr. Kish for being willing to serve yet again.
Mr. Wellford?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
I guess so. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And again, welcome to, Mr. Spalding. We look forward to your continued participation as we move forward. Having no other business in front of us, this meeting is adjourned. Oops, hold on, sorry.
Madam Chair, if I could actually very quickly, on the call, I didn't get the chance to do it earlier, we have our new Planner One, Ms. Taylor Harvey. Taylor, are you able to come on for a second?
Hello, everyone.
Hey, Taylor, welcome.
I just want to introduce her. She's taking over for Mr. Mitchum, and we're very excited. She's already been here, what, this is your second week or third week? I think it's your second week here.
Third.
Third week, see, see, my, she's already a veteran.
Look, look at all the tenure you have. Well, welcome, welcome to a great team, and we look forward to working with you, I'm sure, as, as well as the citizens do.
Thank you, likewise.
Okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.